Thank you. All right. So I'm going to call the meeting of Tuesday, February 19th, to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. There really isn't an announcement. I think I just forgot to cut off the last one on the last template. We were closed yesterday for President's Day. We have the minutes from January 22nd and February 4th.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from January 22nd and February 4th as written.
Both of these reports, however, indicated I'm vice chair.
That can be changed.
Tom can modify to reflect that? Yes, Tom?
Yes.
I actually have not read the minutes yet, to be honest, so if we can...
Do you want to abstain, or do you want to...
You want us to hold them?
Can we hold them?
Yep.
Yeah, I haven't read them yet, to be honest.
Okay. Can you remove your motion?
Yes, I will draw the motion.
Thank you. All right, we'll put those on March 4th. All right. The Town Administrator Search Committee, I did reach out to Mrs. Gill, asked if, because we kept it as a standing appointment, she emailed me back promptly and told me that they're really in the same spot, that they have a meeting this week, I think Thursday evening, and that she didn't have anything new to report, but she will keep us informed as they move along.
At the last meeting I went to, they had started receiving resumes, so they are coming in.
That's the last we heard.
Okay.
All right, so the next item is correspondence. We have Planning Board letter of interest from Chris Drew, so we have a meeting, a workshop meeting, Thursday night. I have posted it along with the, no one's in here, from Planning Board. It has to be a joint meeting, so hopefully they'll be able to be there. And we actually received another email of just kind of questioning what the position is. So we may have two people for those two positions that we're looking for, because we did receive, after the warrant, we received two resignations from members of the Planning Board. But I'm excited that people are stepping up right away to fill that spot. So we'll take that up at our next workshop meeting. So correspondence. I apologize. I don't know why it's not in here.
I don't have it either.
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to see where we... All right. So we had an email from, I asked the town clerk, who's doing some work as the admin, to contact our insurance carrier to discuss the senior center building use. I can pull it up. But this is what we received from them in regards to volunteers at the senior center.
Okay.
So it's basically, the first page is a release for any volunteers would have to fill out. And I'm gonna... And then within the insurance coverage, you'll see there are some starred pieces. They're highlighted in mine, they're starred in yours. They talk about bodily injury, property damage, employees. So our committee, the Council on Aging, would be considered an employee because they are appointed, they are not volunteers. So in a little further of my research with Mrs. Kobetich, she provided me with a letter that was provided to the senior center, which I will now provide to you.
One moment. Did you say the committee are considered employees? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the letter in which Mrs. Callahan provided to about volunteers. You're going to notice in this, this talks about the senior club. This never talks about our council on aging. So this is that we cannot allow a private outside group to come in and run the senior center. And based upon our insurance company and the letter and the email they sent us, there is no reason why our COA cannot be held to open and close and use the building.
Except that it's closed.
Except that it's closed. So I'm just pulling up the email I got from...
So they are considered employees, are they supposed to be on our workers' comp insurance? That's...
I think any of our board and town members. It's kind of a blanket liability for all of them. Volunteers would need to be supervised by a town employee, so this is the email. When I spoke to her on the phone, so Jennifer Bono, B-O-N-O, from Maya is our insurance, she stated, "Volunteers would need to be supervised by a town employee or committee member, and they must be performing duties under the town conduct of business." So that's for the painters, that's for the whomevers who are coming in, but the committee members can be opening and overseeing that. I know right now they have Jill for certain hours, if they opt to keep, you know, keep her on and do her thing, but we could allow seniors into the building under the supervision of the Council on Aging.
And anybody that walks through the door has to fill this form?
And any volunteers would have to fill that out. Now, I spoke to Mrs. Kobetich on Saturday, and I spoke to Jill, and Jill provided me with the budgets of where they are as of the end of January. So the first page is the town budget, and the second page is their grants and those little accounts that they've been surviving on. So I guess the question I had was, and I asked directly to Jill, and I don't know if you have this question, or if the board or the committee has, the council has this question, is the heating, oil, and electricity, so just in my brain, if that, if the board collectively opts to allow your use of the senior center, is there money in the budget to sustain you through this fiscal year? This, so with the heating and the electricity? I don't know if you have that answer.
Well, it's hard to predict.
Can you, do you mind coming up, Jill?
It's hard to predict. We don't know what the weather's going to be like as far as heat is concerned. There has been another bill, I don't think there's a bill that we paid this last month on that summary that you have, which was $1,245. It would be two bills for $900 and something, and another one for $1,245.
On the heating?
On the heat only. Electricity, we're running very well, we're going to have extra, we're going to have money left over there. I don't think that's going to be a concern, but the heat has been running a little high. Now, I did turn it down a few degrees, not a lot, but I did turn it down some since the last time I've spoken with you. Obviously, if we're going to open the senior center, we're going to be turning it back up a little bit and making it comfortable for the seniors.
Right. So my question is then to the board is, so, and then one of the reasons, you know, Council on Aging gave their budget to us, they've come before the board, I decided to kind of look a little deeper and to, we all know why it was closed, the override was not passed, the budget was what it was. But I, this is me personally, and this is why I put it on, I think you guys have been working extremely hard. You have been trying to do your very best, and I feel that the punitive piece of closing the senior center is not affecting the people who the punitive piece was meant for. It's affecting our seniors, and it's not fair, and it's not right. So that's why I brought it to the board, to see, is this something feasible? It doesn't mean that it's the magic wand in July 1st, it's going to be the same, because that's a whole new budget. But if we can make it work, or if we can say seasonally, let's make the senior center available for the programmings that you're doing, I think it's worth discussing. So it's really for us to decide and have that conversation of what do we do with this?
I don't feel that the cost of heat would make it prohibitive. There are other parts of the budget where we are running under, as you noticed, rentals and leases, telecommunications. So I don't think that that would be a deciding factor, in my opinion.
But you're only running ahead, or depending how you look at it, behind, you're not expending as much money because you're no longer open.
Right. The rentals and leases was the Zerx machine, which was taken out, so we're not going to spend anything there until it's put back, or, you know, or we have a printer or something, you know, there.
Because our heating, let's see, we're at 42 percent has been...
That's before this last bill, I don't think, was put in there.
So there should be another, what, $900 off of that?
$1,245 it was. Now hopefully...
That's about half that.
Be nice if we only had like one or two more fill-ups, if it doesn't stay cold.
Because that would leave us with another $1,245.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
And the heating oil, and that's propane?
Propane.
And does that utilize for the kitchen also?
It's not really used in the kitchen.
Do you have gas stove?
We have electric stove. What kind of stove is that? No, that is gas, I'm sorry.
So that would be running off the propane?
But we haven't been using the stove, and there's a question if we reopen, whether we'd reopen the lunch site at this time, or we would wait until July. That's, you know, a decision that would have to be made.
So we're looking at only $1,005 left approximately in the heating, but we're only at 25 percent on the electricity.
Yeah, electricity's been way below.
Again, because we've been closed.
Yeah, but it will go up once it's being used again. So...
So, question, Jennifer, I don't know if you've reached out to, I mean, looking at this budget and talking about the nickels and dimes we could save here and there to open, that's, in my opinion, not a big concern. My bigger concern is the letter that we received from the attorney saying that they would advise against it for certain reasons. I think that's more of an issue we need to talk about and figure out whether or not we're putting the town at risk based on it being closed and not having any employees there, full-time, not full-time, but operationally. And considering that the attorney wrote the letter saying that they strongly advised against it, since we got information from our insurance company, have we contacted to...
So, no, this was written?
So that would be my bigger concern.
This wasn't written for the Council on Aging, this was written for the senior club, which operates outside of...
Which is not the Council on Aging.
Right, and I understand that, but have we gotten back to this attorney and saying...
And I don't know if they realize that.
Right, so that would be the number one thing I would want to talk about or talk to, as opposed to talking about saving the nickels and dimes here.
I know time's very precious, but do you think we should have a workshop? Let's see what Copeland Page says about this. Let's see if, once we have the real numbers, is, well, it's not going to be $8,000, it's going to be $6,000, no, $7,000 about. And that'll, is $7,000 enough to run for four months? That's the bottom line question.
So I can follow up with...
I mean, you guys have been fantastic. Let's try to schedule this as soon as possible.
I think, yeah, and I think sharing this insurance information with the attorney is, I think that would be the number one.
Yeah, so Brian Riley was the one who wrote the letter, right?
Yes, Brian Riley wrote the letter.
I will email him, and I'll ask him, or actually probably, yeah, and I'll ask him for some input based upon the Council on Aging, not the senior club doing that, to see what he...
Doesn't make a difference.
I was saying, I just know that sometimes the letters are framed based upon the information
And I think with us having this letter saying that he strongly advises against it for liability reasons, we do, as a responsibility to the town, need to reach back and say, based on this insurance, is this, are you still in agreement?
Yeah, so we asked the insurance company about the Council on Aging.
And does he realize that we're talking now, that this...
The insurance is about...
The club is not being... The club is no longer in question. This is with the Council on Aging, and does he still have the, this...
Concern.
Concern with the Council on Aging?
I think it's a question we need to ask.
Okay. So I will ask Brian Riley to clarify that, and then once we get that letter, then we'll schedule...
Set up a meeting.
Right. We'll schedule a workshop. Can you come up to the table, Pam? Pam is the Council on Aging chairperson?
Hi.
Hello.
And I know you all know me, and I'm a little disappointed, I need to say, because I had high hopes for tonight's meeting. I've been just about harassing poor Joe and poor Jennifer. I don't know what to say. The COA board, our sub-member board, the seven of us are willing to take full responsibility. We are willing to open and close, we are willing to see everything operates in protocol. We're not asking for any money at this point. We understand that there's no budgets to be given out for payrolls or what have you until July 1st. Of course, I'll be here, July 1st, begging for money, that's, but every other board will be too. I'm here on behalf of all the seniors in Millville. I'm not here on just myself. I just want to just reiterate one more thing, that the senior center was closed, and we paid $12,500 to keep it closed. I just want you to keep that figure in your mind. That's a lot of money that we took and just threw out the door. Our seniors, a lot of them are still shut-ins. A lot of them need to get out. They worked very hard for the senior center. I'm not asking to build a building, I'm just asking to reopen a building that's closed. And I'm not, I'm asking everybody, I'm all for you.
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir.
I am.
Totally understand.
I know, I know you all know, you've all had parents that are elderly, you've all have aunts, uncles, you're all getting on age yourself, whatever it may be. I know you're with me, but I have to have you the 100% with me, not maybe. We've had plenty of time to contact lawyers in all these words. There's a lot of words there.
Right.
I mean, it, to me, it's like, can't we just start from day one and not look back?
I would love to just open the doors, trust me. I was one of the proponents for the senior center and the override.
Can't we just not look back? And no more override, no more nothing?
Pam.
Let's just go with day one.
Pam, as a responsibility to this town, as a selectman, when I have an attorney saying, as a liability reason, we should not open the senior center, it's my responsibility to reach back and say, are we able to open it now that we have this piece of paper from our insurance company? It's a responsibility of this board, in my opinion, to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Okay, those are on all in the same page.
I think it's a step closer. But it's making sure that this letter can be redrafted, so that it can reflect the Council on Aging's role.
The Council on Aging, not the club.
Not the senior club.
Little words and little verbiage can get us into big trouble, big lawsuits.
Well, you know, we've been here, done that.
Right.
And no more looking back, just a step forward, and we're with you 100% because you are our bosses, and we do respect you all. I mean, we wouldn't be here if we didn't, and we wouldn't be doing the job we're doing, killing ourselves, because if we didn't, if we didn't respect you as a board.
We appreciate your dedication and everything.
And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I don't want to say to my board, next month at our meeting, "Well, we haven't heard from the attorney yet," or, "This one is waiting for a letter to come from John Doe," or, "This one said something about the COA board." You know, let's just get it black and white.
That's what we're going to try to do.
You know, if we can get it black and white, so be it.
Unfortunately, in this day and age, you have to be very careful. You have one incident...
It seems like we've been tiptoeing through the tulips for quite a while, and I just, we just need...
This is the first time we're seeing this tonight.
Exactly.
Apparently, it's the first time you've seen a lawyer's letter, too.
No, no, we've seen this before.
All right.
We've seen this before, when it was requested that the Council on Aging or the senior club opened the senior center functions, that's when this letter came out, and we've seen this letter before.
All right.
So...
All right, I'm just wondering why the lawyers haven't been a little more forthcoming.
I don't think we've reached back to them, I guess.
So in regards to that letter, no. I haven't emailed them, but I just...
But they respond quickly.
But thank you for doing what you've done. You've opened the door up for us.
And I think one piece, too, is that between Sherri, Diane, the town clerk, and myself, we've been trying to fill in all of these gaps and all of these emails and all of the coverage. So, you know, Diane had to call the insurance company, she get the email, she sends it to me, I get the, you know, so it's piecing everything together, so it's not fluid when you have different pieces doing, different people doing different pieces, and then trying to meet once or twice a week to make sure everything's being covered. It's a lot, so we're closer than we were, so that's good, and we're moving forward, so that's good. So we'll get some clarification from Brian Riley, so that that letter can be drafted with the perspective of the Council on Aging opening the doors, and then we can make sure that we're covered liability-wise as a town.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
More than you had three months ago.
Yeah?
So, the silver lining, Pam.
The silver lining.
Silver lining. I know. Oh, I know. Thank you.
That's okay, though. We don't mind that.
So we'll do some follow-up on, with Brian for that, and then we'll set up a workshop as Mr. Who...
If we need it, I mean, if this all comes back, fine, and we can tell them at our next meeting, it's a go.
So when we get that letter, I'll email it out to everyone, and then through Blind Cobbin Copy, you can let me know if it's going to be a workshop with a lengthy discussion, or if it's a board or selectman meeting, in which we can just do a, you know, a typical discussion and action if need be. Okay. All right, so the next correspondence is from Eversource, and they will be doing their vegetation clearing in Millville on Right Away Number 13. So, looks, coming in through, between Kimpton and Albee, in that area there. The next one is from the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. They are meeting tomorrow night, for anyone who is interested. The next one is a public information request from the Wistah Telegram and Gazette. As you can tell, it's a lengthy list who they sent it to. It looks like they're doing a comprehensive study of the valley and marijuana. Diane is spearheading this, along with our lawyers, to make sure that we have all of the information there. Planning Board, I had Planning Board alternate member on here, thinking that we could appoint, but after further discussion, we need to have it as a joint meeting with Planning Board, and that will take place on Thursday.
What time is that?
Six, I think I posted it.
Thursday is 6:30.
Six, I think it says six, because I used to...
But you posted it at six, I bet you.
Yeah, but if we're here and we need to wait for a quorum or wait for individuals, that's fine, too. So, I think I used the template, and I didn't change it to 6:30, so it got posted as six. But if anyone has, you know, if you're running late or something, just let me know, and we can delay the start of it as long as...
You're assuming I'll be running late?
You were. I'm on vacation. Tom's on vacation, Joe's retired, so...
Still in the office.
As much as, oh, that's no fun. All right, so we'll take that up, and I'm hoping Planning Board will be here. I've contacted them to see if their members can be here, because it needs to be...
How many active members are there now?
Three. And they have public hearings on Monday evening, so it is the utmost importance to fill those positions, and it's just a shame that we don't have a full board to take on the two permits that are coming before them, or the two special hearings. All right, so we have a application for toll day for May 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 at the center of town, for the friends of the Millville Library. Yeah, we just need to, typically, we have them get in touch with the highway surveyor for barrels.
And the chief?
And the chief. Usually signs off on the toll days, they're usually fine. This group has no issues. Okay. So I'd be looking for a motion to allow the friends of the library to have a toll day on May 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Row? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. All right, so the next item is just a starting point. The Millville, the Longfellow Municipal Center, at the town meeting, the town voted for it to possibly be sold, so I think the RF, is it RFQ?
RFQ.
Yes. I don't, none of that was started. I think we need to figure out what we're going to do with that building as it sits, is not being used. I think we need to, I just wanted to throw it out there, do we need, you know, is that the charge of our next town administrator? Is that the charge of us? Is that the charge of something we need, you know, we obviously need to look at. The chief would need to be involved in that, because his station is positioned on that lot, it also shares a septic, so there's a lot of things that go along with that. For tonight's purposes, it was just to say, hey, we need to do something. So I'm going to move that. I just want to plant that seed, so that at the next meetings or whatever, we need to stop thinking about how we want to approach that. So that's just, this is just the launching pad for that. So that's why that's on there for new business, but I think it's something we need to keep on our radar.
We might consider what's presently being stored there as well. What are you going to do with it?
Right, no, there's a lot to think about. There's a lot to think about. And plus, we have the U-Daw Tower at the front, and the investments and the wonderful work the historical commission has done with the plaques and the things, so I mean, there's, it's multi-layered, but we need to do something, we need to do something there. It's been, the summer will be three years that it's, has sat vacant, so we need to do something.
Absolutely.
Okay? All right. Old business, the park grant. Chief, do you want to come up along with Joe? So, the park grant is the grant that Mrs. Callahan applied for, for the veterans area. Chief went to the training with Trish, Joe and the chief Friday, the 15th, went and met with...
Trish, I saw.
Oh, that's right, you weren't there. Trish went in lieu of, because you were busy that day, went and spoke to the veterans park. Went and spoke to the Veterans' Park. So could you maybe recap what's, what's been going on?
The, the chief also filled me in on additional information. But the park grant itself, the Veterans' Committee looked at what was being proposed. They made some comments. And the bottom line on that meeting of last Friday is that Veterans' Committee had comments and, and they were looking at different options. There will be a meeting, another meeting on the 22nd this, this Friday at, at the fire station at 10:00 AM with their ideas and proposals of what they would like to see done in that area. You know, building on the layout that was submitted with the grant. They're very receptive, you know, to that. And so we'll, we'll, I plan to attend the Friday meeting.
Is it this Friday?
This Friday, the 22nd.
At what time?
At 10:00 o'clock in the morning.
All right. I will, I'll try, I can attend for the first, like, little bit. My girls have dentist's appointments. So I'm not working, so at least I can pop in. Okay.
Apparently, there are two phases to this whole thing. And the chief-
Sure. For people who are not aware, the former administrator actually applied for two grants. One for FY19 and one for FY20. FY19 is specific to Veterans' Park. Upgrades to the park, walkway, lighting, fence, and a pavilion for that particular park. FY20, she did submit an application that's on hold because not out yet would be for the acquisition of land adjacent to the Fire Department. Unfortunately, we can't place the 20 in front of the 19, so we have to move forward with the 19. Now, that's not a, it's a reimbursement grant compared to, it's not a match grant, it's a reimbursement. So the grant she had submitted was roughly $74,000 in our match would be the difference of what we spend. So if we spend 50, we have to come up with 24, how the numbers work. It's very imperative that we go through with this grant because this is a gateway to other grants. And if we stumble or drop the ball on this particular grant, we probably won't see another grant because they're very competitive. But we fall into a category of smaller towns that not many apply for. So I was more or less told, hey, we do a good job on this grant. Look for other grants down the road, which we need, especially for the playgrounds in town. So to recap, it's improvements to veterans. We can make modifications to the grant. The Veterans' Committee would like to see something else done. We can make some minor modifications to it. But the, the goal is to be successful, get it completed. That way, the 2020 grant looks that much better in the eyes of the Commonwealth. So that's something we have to move forward with. So there's a timeline, though. We have to work diligently to get it done. Unfortunately, Veterans' Park is on the same lot as the Fire Department. So the first thing we have to do is divide the possible land. One Fire Department and one Veterans' Park. So once that's done.
Yeah.
And then we have to write up an article for the warrant. There's a lot involved in this grant.
So, yeah, I have just a rough draft for myself for annual town meeting as things been popping up. And on there, I have the subdividing of the park grant as needed. And that's going to really require our lawyers to, to work with us and-
And the other thing is an addendum to the, the actual deed for the Veterans' Park. That has to remain a park in perpetuity, forever.
Forever.
So that's part of the grant process. If we don't complete that task, we're not eligible to move forward with the grant. Those three things have to be done quickly. And then, once we've done those three things, we can get into the construction phase. What's, what we're going to do once it's voted on. And that's not going to be hard. There's no RFPs required because the dollar amount is going to be well below the requirements of procurement laws. So we should be in a good spot. And recap.
Excellent. All right.
So I understand that Millville was the only small town that received this type of grant.
Well, don't let the news out. Other people are trying to mess us all up.
No, but it's, your chances once you get the first phase, your second phase is kind of like right there for you.
Swallowing the ball.
Yeah. So it was a good catch by Diane Lockwood, our town clerk.
Yeah, because that would have gone right by.
Because it, it came in like during Christmas. It was like, hey, where's this information? And it was like Christmas vacation. And she really, she caught it. She brought it right to the attention. We called, you know, she, she did all of the legwork on that. And then the chief kind of picked it up after that because it is pretty intense. They had a half-day training on how to administer the grant and what to do. So he, he was able to go there and partake in that.
Chief, is Trish working with you on this as well?
She is.
Yeah. So, thank goodness.
So I'm also, yeah, for Trish, I'm also meeting with Trish.
You don't trust him?
No.
No, no, no. You know what I mean.
I mean, she's very good.
So I told Trish that I will be in this week because she wants, because Trish wants to go over all of the park grant with me to make sure that we know that we're needed. I was in one day and I was like, I need, so I'll be in, I'll be in one morning to sit with her or afternoon to sit with her and go over what we need to do as a town for that grant. But no, I appreciate that. All right. The next item is the Capital Planning Committee member. So they're trying to resurrect the Capital Planning Group Committee. And we need a Board of Selectmen member. This was on the last agenda. And nobody was able to. So I will keep it here until a member volunteers for that committee.
Don't we usually volunteer whoever's absent? Is that what we do?
I believe he, at the last meeting, said no.
Just joking.
And you weren't here. So technically-
You missed your chance.
So technically.
You missed your chance.
You know what? I, I appreciate people have lives outside of this room and not everything works for every person. So, you know, if, if, if all the people, if that whole committee is there and we don't have someone, then we'll figure it out.
Okay, well.
Yeah. So let, we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah.
All right. Update on the interim town administrator. Mr. Hool and I will be meeting with some possible candidates tomorrow. We will bring back their information, resumes, fee, schedule, whatever, to the board on, for our Thursday meeting. In hopes that we can have an interim town administrator start as soon as possible.
Thursday meeting.
The workshop.
At six.
Yep. Which will be televised. Okay. We do have open board positions at the time of this. It wasn't the Planning Board. We had one person and we had their letter. But we, the assessors in the past have expressed that, you know, they're, they're doing it, but it's-
We still have two open positions.
They would like to step down, but they're not going to step down until we have someone. And I think we've used, and they haven't reached out again, but they will eventually. And I'd rather have someone step in and take over. I did see one email this evening for an assessor position. So hopefully, we'll, we'll get some others. I did put some things out on social media saying we needed people. So hopefully, we have some people step up. So that's still there. We still need assessors. Financial policies. I've got to, I've got to separate and send those to you, the new sections. Public draft, public forum draft. I sent you all a draft. So I took, I sent it in a separate email. Did you get it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I sent that to everyone. I took the ones I had given you, the town of Andover, Kingston, Mass, Northbridge School Committees, and there was another community, too. I took all of those. I put them on one page. I put the headings. I put the subsections. I looked to what was repeating, what wasn't repeating, what, what fit our town. Some things went into executive sessions. I just wanted this to be clearly public forum. That is what I reduced it to. I'd like you to preview it. I would like to possibly approve it.
Tonight.
Tonight would be ideal. But if you're not ready tonight, then we can wait. But I'd like it to be approved. I want it to be available to the residents. And so we can start. If we do approve it tonight, I would like it to be approved on the contingency that it goes through legal first.
Right.
That would be the only condition I'd be looking for. If approved tonight. If not, we can send it to legal and put it on the next meeting. But I, so it's up to, it's the pleasure of the board.
I did read it and I thought you did a great job of combining and getting everything.
Cut and pasting and reformatting.
It's, it's, it's a-
You know, I want it to be reflective of what we do here, too. I mean, in some towns, it was like, if you're out of order, the constable will come in. I was like, yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't need to set that tone in the policy. That's-
Had that happen before.
That's, that's clearly how the meeting is run, and we don't need to state that. But I wanted it to be a clear definition. We don't talk about personnel. Every person who's an employee here is granted the ability to have complaints go through the administrative process, to be heard, to be notified, to have the option under master general law, to have an open session or a private session, to be notified in 48 hours. So those things still stand in place. And I refuse to have anyone come in and badmouth any employee board members without that person being able to, to say anything. And we have administrative people here who can handle complaints about officials and boards and employees. So open forum is just that, a place to share your, to question about how things are going. But it, it really has a structure. And I tried to capture that as a clear message in short and as condensed as I could to put public forum back in. So it's at the pleasure of the board what you'd like to do with that.
I, I would motion to approve it contingent on legal review and further comment from the board pending legal review.
Okay.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Please, aye?
Aye.
And vote is unanimous. Thank you. I feel like I've got one thing done. All right. All right. So the payroll audit was concluded. I met with each of the employees and discussed the options they had. Legal just sent me the formal letter in which I will print out and each person will have with, for their records. So our employees, by vote of the board, was to keep within the budget. So they had the option of a couple of things. They had the option of bringing their pay back to their original rate prior to July 1 and reducing their hours that they worked to maintain to that budget number. Some employees took it upon themselves to figure out what was left. Most of them did. I shouldn't say some, but all of them knew what was left and how far behind they were. Some said, you know what? I'm going to go even lower than the July 1 rate. I'm going to continue to work my same number of hours. I'm going to work at a lower rate. And I will keep within budget. I don't want to lose hours because my job is in, I need that time.
That's hard enough with the hours I have.
Right. They didn't want to cut their hours and then be behind or stressed. So I totally understand. So some people, and then they were also given the option to be paid at the rate that they are or actually, but when it returned to their rate, I'm sorry. But when that money runs out, that they would essentially be laid off. So they all had the options given to them. Most of them were able to voice to me in that meeting what they were going to do. This letter from legal just has where they check off and they sign what they're actually doing. But those, those, the payroll has been in place since the meeting with them. So this will just finalize the, the last piece of it. So hopefully, people will, we are all within budget. So their letters, they'll have those tomorrow. All right. So that is done. All right. So Selectmen's Forum, Mr. Reposey, you asked to be put on?
Yes. I attended the, the meeting at the Hartnett School regarding a review of the regional school agreement. And basically, this effort was initiated by Mrs. Reggio, Chairman of the School Committee. And basically, the intent here is to form a committee to review and rewrite, if necessary, the present regional agreement. It seems that there are three or four versions of a regional agreement. If you look at the Blackstone Agreement, it doesn't necessarily agree with Millville's take on it. So she was looking to form a committee and that process has begun. And what it's going to require from Millville is a selectman from each town to participate in that revamping or review of the regional agreement. It would include the selectman, a selectman, a finance committee member from each town. We do have-
Andrea.
Andrea.
Penet.
in a, someone from the general public. It can be either a parent or the parent and representative on the committee.
Could we do, if a selectman's not available because it's, we spread ourselves pretty thin between all of our, could it be a, our designee? I'm just saying.
We see no reason why we can't ask.
Yeah.
I think there is some designees that we could appoint that are very knowledgeable and productive and may be able to. I'm just, I'm just, I mean, we can't, I'm not complaining. But, yeah, I just read tonight that we need one for capital. We need one for CMRPC. We need one for this. Now we need another one. And it's hard to, it's hard to spread those responsibilities sometimes. So, just a thought.
This is the request of the committee, the-
Right. It's a request. It's not- I'd rather see someone there than it go empty.
Exactly.
I'd rather see someone we, you know, designate than no one. That's, that's my concern, is if we can't get someone, I cannot do it. I will say that right now. It is beyond the wheelhouse of my, my wishes and desires. And I wouldn't be a productive, fruitful participant in that. So I will not be part of it.
What is the timeframe around this committee?
ACIP.
I understand that. But are they looking to complete this, this agreement review in six months, nine months, 12 months? Did they say what time, timeframe they're looking at this?
I can't imagine they're looking for May meeting.
No.
So they must be looking for maybe next May's meeting because it's a lot of work.
Yeah. So I just want to know what the timeframe is.
And have they even, has Department of Elementary and Secondary Education been called to ask for the original agreement? Because if there's different versions out there, that there's-
I think they're going to have to do it.
That doesn't make any sense.
That was brought up at, at the meeting, that the Department of-
DESI.
DESI. They, they really don't have an agreement that agrees.
They're going to have to go through town meeting agendas or minutes.
This isn't going to be an easy-
To get, to get the full picture of what's been approved. And they're going to need to do that in each town. Because there was one year, Millville said yes, and Blackstone said no to a regional agreement. And then the next year, Millville said no, and then Blackstone said yes. So, I mean, they have to be a yes, yes on both fronts for it to actually be there. So you have to look at two towns' minutes in reports. So it is, yeah, I can't imagine that they're shooting for this May.
No, they can't be. Next, next May is going to be a task.
Right. Is it Jane? Maybe you could reach out to Jane if it's, or we can reach out to Jane and ask her some of those questions.
Yeah, I can do that.
There is a, Jane is not on, will not be on that committee. Sarah Williams.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is, is going to be the chair.
And all their, their emails are on the website? Anything else? All right. Alright, the next one is, we just have our workshop meeting on Thursday before you leave tonight. It says budget, but since then, it's kinda turned into budget slash workshop, because there's a lot of items on there, not just budgetary items. When you leave tonight, I have just a small packet to give you for that meeting. And then next week, we have our joint meeting with Vincom on Tuesday, which will start at six with Doc and let me see who else, you had asked me earlier who was on that. The agenda for that night is the treasurer collector, who will go over the insurance benefits and retirement, our highway surveyor, our tree warden, our building and zoning, and our veterans. So that will be on the twenty-sixth. Alright, that being said, Selectmen Liaison Reports, Mr. Alwood's not here tonight. Erica, you talked about the search committee?
Yeah.
And you're now home from your sunny vacation, and you'll be working diligently on a flyer, right?
Can't wait.
Did I, you get the paperwork for the mailing?
I didn't, did you send it to me?
It was in-
One of these?
Maybe.
Alright, I'll check through these.
I had your name on it to be placed in your packet. Yep, right there.
There it is, I haven't opened this one yet.
Yep, that's right. Alright, Mr. Hool, anything to report out on?
Not on the search committee, because that's Mrs. Blake, but I have sent an email to the Teamsters Local Representative that represents our firefighter. I have not heard back from him. Chief, I'm gonna touch base with you, if we could, if I don't hear back, I'm gonna send him three dates anyway, and maybe he can pick one of those three, then we can get together and hopefully get, mail this down.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Mr. Repose, or anything on the marijuana licenses?
I understand that the, the meeting with the Planning Board for-
Monday.
March, this is coming Monday.
As long as we get two more members. Okay, that's for Marty's.
Yep.
Okay. For myself, the warrants, a warrant posted on, I think you have one in there, I signed another one today. On February first, a warrant was signed for sixty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. And, today, I signed another warrant, was created on two seven for bills, and it is thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. So those two warrants have been signed. Tonight, we're gonna hold off on a signing of minutes of the second and the fourth, but we did approve the meetings of the seventh, but we didn't have them in our packet at the last meeting, so we will need to sign these. Our next regular meeting, I'm gonna pass this around to be signed. Does anyone have anything else? Our next regular meeting will take place on Monday, March fourth. This evening, we are going to not adjourn, we are going to enter executive session within that motion. I would like the motion to be made that the, we will only be returning to open session to adjourn the meeting, there'll be no other discussion on any other topics. So I would like that to be in the motion.
So moved.
You're gonna have to do executive session and the, the reason why, and then add on only to come back to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to enter executive session, permission of law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Return me, to meeting room, only to exit-
Adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, need a rule vote, Joe?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Enter, alright. Alright.